Yeah, the whole section, yeah, I got it. Go through it.
All right. We will start the planning and zoning board meeting. It's six o'clock, August 11th, 2020. So we will begin. The first order of business is to do a roll call of who is present. And so if you want to just, Field, why don't we start with you? And we'll just go around.
Field Scarborough.
Nicole Northrup.
Hal Goodman.
Well, that's it. There's only four of us. Janie Daniels is not here this evening. So we have one absent. So the next order of business is to look at the agenda. Are there any changes? And if not, move to adopt.
I move that we adopt the agenda as submitted.
That's Hal. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Hal made the motion and Nicole seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. So the agenda has been approved. The next order of business is approval of the minutes of July 14th. So those have been distributed and we have read those. Are there any changes? Anyone wishes to discuss?
I move that we approve the minutes as they were submitted.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Hal and a second by Nicole. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's unanimous. The minutes have been approved of the July 14th meeting. So this, the next section is public comment. And we actually do have a couple of people who are listening in. And so I'm just going to quickly read our public comment expectations. Members of the public are invited to address the planning board. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person, five minutes per group. Please identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded. Is there anyone who is dialing in who wishes to? If you wish to speak, the way that we indicate that is by pressing star nine and we can recognize the last digits, four digits of your phone number. Is there anyone dialing in who would wish to speak to this group this evening? Anybody? Okay. It looks like everybody is happy to just listen in. So we will move to the next item on the agenda. And that is new business. And the new business is a review, a conversation, a presentation about the Tom, the town common site plan. And we have an engineer from Albemarle Associates. John is here this evening to discuss what has, has transpired.
At the podium, please.
For those listening in, we're fixing the technical issues with Mr. DeLucia's microphone.
As I was saying, this has been a really fun project. This is going to be a beautiful conference for, for the town, for the community. We worked with your staff, your town manager, your task force members in, in developing a final plan that can be built from all of the conceptual planning that had already gone on before. There was a lot of public input in this. The desire was for 60 parking spaces. The desire was for common green areas that would be suitable to get away, to read, to get into nature a little bit and to really clean up that whole area that used to be the three-story hotel originally and then the office building for Derrick County and some of their other facilities there. So what you see up on the screen right there is the site plan, the most current site plan that we've developed. I will, it has 60 parking spaces. It has provisions for stormwater management between the parking spaces. It provides for existing accesses to the east side for some ways that people have been accessing the site from those buildings. It provides a future area for a bathroom and a shade structure that was planned that will not be built in this phase. And we like it. What I'd like to do right now is go over landscaping plan because that's really, really shows what we thought about in our, in our design. The landscape architects are Bill Hamilton and Greg Hilt from CLH. They're out of Durham. They've worked with us on the Coastal Studies Institute. They've worked with us on Doughty Park before, on the Island Bank Scenic Byway project. So if we can go to the 600 series one, should be 600 there. There's multiple plan sheets that you have. There's a utility plan, there's a grading plan, there's a demolition plan. There's the site plan, of course. And then the landscaping plan, landscaping details. Our meetings with the task force last week was a, was a very productive meeting. Not very many changes were asked, a couple of plant substitutions. There is, there is the landscaping plan. You'll notice that there's a couple of pathways that are called cinder pathways that are kind of run between Lord Essex and down here toward Budley. And the idea was to create some places that when the vegetation finally, finally gets to maturity, you have some quiet places, you have places to sit and read. There's pollinators planting in here for bees. There are plantings that were suggested for fragrance, for color. So we really think this is going to be a nice facility and a really beautiful place to just come and recreate. Plus it'll provide some much-needed parking that we need down there, too. Carl, we can go to the lighting plan now. I'll go over that real quick. The lighting was, was deter, was designed based upon the same fixtures that you have at Magnolia Grill and at Crease Park that we recently put in, using the same look, style. This, this plan shows seven single fixture poles. Basically around the parking lots themselves. There are some double fixture poles that you see. There's one there, there, there's five of those. And then the small bollards, which would be about 36 inches tall. They don't throw a whole lot of light, but, but we're putting that in there for security purposes. And a couple of them don't look like they should be right to that place, but when you put the cinder path in, they, they work where they are. There's a plan for a trellis right there off of that circle. The circle is proposed to be in an exposed, you know, all the pathways are going to be exposed to aggregate. We're looking to do in the circle with some type of a paver that would set it off a little bit more. It would look a little nicer. Also down near, down near the entrance off of Budley and over at the corner of Lord Essex and Budley, we looked at, some of those bricks are in really bad condition where they used to go up into the old office buildings. We were going to tear them out anyway. And when you have brick and they're exposed aggregate and then brick and exposed aggregate, we just thought that that area near the entrance of Budley and all that's over there, we just, we're going to take some of the brick out and put exposed aggregate back just so it's uniform, you don't have one buttoned up against the other. Especially down there in the vicinity of that driveway where some of that, some of that brick really just needs to go away. Plus we've got, we've got a few things to clean up. I will tell you that the four oak trees that are shown there are being preserved. There's another two trees up on, up on Annalise Dare and, and another cedar tree that's back here by Mr. Fearing's building that are being preserved. Trying to figure out a way to get their garbage and their dumpster area to be able to get to the street has kind of caused us to put a sidewalk right against the property line there. Then next to the sidewalk will be the white picket fence. And that way we can hide some of the rollout dumpsters and things that are in that location. We're going to use the existing water service and existing sewer services. There's a water line that will be replaced that will be under the parking lot. If we didn't, it's a good time to go do that now. We'll be serving ourselves from that water line. The site, right now the site holds probably close to an inch, an inch and a half of most of the parking lot within that central area, which will be depressed and have some cypress trees in it and act like a rainy garden. When the water gets too deep in that central area, you see the valley gutter that is between the first, first, I'm going to walk over. The valley gutter is right here. We've got that designed so that when that internal area gets too full, the water will actually run the other direction and will run out into Budley. Like I said before, we've reduced a lot coverage on this site from 82% and 100% runoff from that to about 56% with meeting your provisions, the ordinance. We'd like to actually build the parking spaces, most of the parking spaces out of some type of eco paver to give it a little bit nicer look. And if we do that, we'll be managing much more than the town would require and much more than the state would require. If we can afford that, that's what we'd like to do. But if not, we still are managing our stormwater a whole lot better than it was before. And with that, I'll be quiet and let you all ask the questions you have.
One question I would like to just throw out there and it's, it's because I think people will wonder. So we've got this beautiful park that we're building along with a parking lot. And you know, especially this time of year, you know, it's so hot when we have these drought conditions. Can you talk about how we're going to be able to water our plants?
We are looking at potentially putting an irrigation system in. However, most of the plants that have been selected are drought tolerant plants and also salt tolerant plants. There are, I've shown on the utility plan, three locations where we have hose bibs for, for temporary watering. And right now, I think depending on the budget, it'll determine whether we put an irrigation system in or do hand watering. The schedule has us finishing this project up and having everything done around February, March. So that's a pretty good time to get plants in the ground here. Even a little bit earlier than that would, would not hurt and it won't be as hot. So I think that's something that we still need to work out and decide which direction we're going to go. Although we are holding an irrigation budget item if we need it. Well, I don't know that we'll need it everywhere, Sherri, but we may need it in certain areas.
I just figured that's a question that people are going to ask. So I thought it would be good to get a.
And we, and we will, we are planning on going, and the areas that are in sod right now or in grass, turf grass, we are planning to do that in sod so that it, as soon as everything's in, it's nearly usable.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Do you have one? Hal, do you have anything?
No, looks good.
Pretty straightforward. Yes. Melissa, I feel like I jumped right over you with a staff perspective. And so is there anything? I mean, I, I think Melissa had a really wonderful comment. She is a staff liaison to the task force working on this. And that is that this, this beautiful area and so prominent in our town will be a gem, like a jewel that people will recognize. Is there anything else you'd like to?
No, it's been great working with Albemarle and Associates. John's been incredibly professional and fun to work with. And we've worked with the ordinance every step of the way. So I don't see any conflicts there. So as, as far as I'm concerned, because this is a parking lot and a lighting plan, it's before you all for approval tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, it's pretty remarkable to be able to get both this beautiful park and this parking lot. So one is functional, well, they're both functional, but it brings aesthetic and function into a really important part of our town. It's been wonderful working with you. And I think the process was, I'm on the task force and the process really, I think people brought up great points and you listened and you addressed. So I want to thank you for that interaction.
Couple of things that I didn't say is, is since the bathroom structure is not scheduled now, there is a small area next to that first parking space on the right coming in. You see that little square? It's right next to that first parking space. That's, I kind of envisioned that as a garden shed looking structure that would house our electrical meters and our panels for our lights and things temporarily. And it would be right there along that white picket fence and it'd be small and unobtrusive. We do have multiple conduits scheduled to go in multiple places underneath this parking lot. So eventually we'll be able to get the, any power, wifi or cameras. We will extend the water line and the sewer line over into that area in this phase so that we don't tear anything up later.
Okay, great. One other thing I wanted to just ask of Melissa, and that is since this, what you will see is what we've been calling phase one, there will be another phase, hopefully. And at some point, we're not sure exactly when, that sort of has a financial question to it. But can you, Melissa, talk a little bit about what is expected in phase two? I know there were a lot of people who were really interested in getting bathrooms or a bathhouse, so to speak. Can you speak to that?
Sure. So on, on the site, right where Woody has the, the hand, there are future plans for a bathroom and shade structure attached to it. And so there, that would create another little area there. And then there have been discussions of, in the circle, maybe some sort of public art. Of course, that would, that would wait for phase two as well. I think those would be the main items for a phase two. Charging stations, we've talked about.
Getting the trellis in, if we get the trellis in at phase one, then we are starting to create the shade structure.
Sure.
And as John alluded to, the park section plus the trees in the parking lot, it's really to engage all the senses. So there'll be, you know, there'll be this wonderful sound of songbirds and animals that will find this a great habitat. There will be definitely fragrance with the jasmine and other plantings. And of course, it'll be a visual beauty as well. So it's, it's meant to engage really all the senses as you sit in this wonderful spot. So wonderful. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you so much, John, and thank you, Melissa. Anything else? All good to go? All right. So tonight then, since it, this plan does meet really all of our requirements in terms of our zoning ordinances, is there a motion for approval or more discussion?
I'll move to approve the plans for the town common as presented.
I'll second that.
Excellent. We have a motion to accept the plan in its entirety as it is by Nicole. We have a second by Hal. All in favor of approving the plan signify by saying aye.
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 Very well. That's unanimous and the motion passes to approve this plan. Thank you so much. We will have a town common.
You will have a town common and it will be beautiful.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And really I, I do want to make one comment, and that is this has been a very long process. There have been many charrettes and ideas brought forward and just, you know, sort of working on the task force, we, it mattered. What everybody said really mattered and we tried to include as many aspects of that into this plan as possible. So I want to thank everybody who came in and spent their time during the charrettes and just data gathering, information gathering. So thank everybody out there who participated in this very public process. All right. So our next order of business is the appointment to Park, our Preservation and Architectural Review Committee. And last, at the last meeting in July, it was brought up that we have a vacancy on Park. And it was a vacancy by Catherine Bocjan, who was the representative from the Manio Preservation Trust. And so according to our ordinance, we needed an appointment to Park from that group. So someone may put forward either their chair or a designee. And so I received information today that we do have a new member. So the Manio Preservation Trust has put forward Hannah McOwen Forsland. And if I could, I would like to read just a quick biography about Hannah. I think she is going to be a remarkable fit for Park. So Hannah was born and raised in Manio and grew up in a historic home in downtown Manio. She recently purchased the Creve House. It's at 300 Budley, right down the street. So she purchased, purchased the house from her parents, Beth Story and Michael McOwen. She served on the Manio Preservation Trust Board since 2014. And she says she adores historic architecture and feels that preserving historic properties adds value to our town. So she lives in a historic home with her husband Phil and her two kids, Mira and Story, and feels lucky to be able to experience the charms and the quirks that come with historic architecture. She says she looks forward to working with Park toward the continued support of historic preservation in Manio. So we are very happy to have Hannah and know she will be a great addition. And this will be a four-year term. At the next Park meeting, a chair will be selected by the group as required by the ordinance. So are there, is there any discussion? I think we need a motion.
I'll move that we accept Hannah Forsland as the Manio Preservation Trust representative on the Park Committee.
I'll second it.
Field second. Is there any discussion, any other discussion before we finish the motion? Okay, very well. So Hal made the motion, Field seconded the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. The second order of old business is a review and recommendations to the Board of Commissioners for text language prohibiting boat lifts on town property. And I would like to call on Melissa for a staff report.
Sure. So I reviewed the draft minutes that you all just approved and tried to take your comments into consideration and put together what is presented here. So I first apologize that on the actual text document that I provided to you, it says page one and two of three. It's actually only two pages, so you're not missing a page. So the first page is, is the newly amended that strikes through the boat lift language. And then page two is how I think we can accomplish the things that you all, you all discussed at your last meeting. And if you have that picture that I sent to you, Woody? There was a bit of discussion about sections 12, 7A, 1 through 3 and the designation of all of those. And I think that based on the discussion we heard at the last meeting, that just striking through all of those and adding a new section where we regulate boat lifts as section D, which is what I've done here, might accomplish what I think I heard in the last meeting. So, but there were questions about, and Chair Wickstrom asked again today. So I wanted to provide you all with this map. The stars indicate kind of the markers that we mentioned last time, which is the Cora May Bass Night Bridge, which is the north star, yes. And then the southern star is where the town's property ends. And then the, the Marshes Light boardwalk begins. So if the intention is to keep that boardwalk, if you all feel like there is the need to further designate boardwalks that are for public use or, I don't, I don't know the best definition for that, but that's where the town's property line for the boardwalk and docks ends. And so I want to be very clear with you all, what I, what I have drafted here wouldn't necessarily take care of the concern of the southernmost boardwalk that belongs to the Marshes Light HOA.
Thank you. So in our minutes, the reason this is significant is that in the minutes from last time, you'll remember our discussion. And I think every one of us had brought up the idea of can we prohibit boat lifts on a public easement up to the marina, which we know has, boat lifts are okey dokey on, on that marina and, yeah, any other of the marinas now. So, but I think all, all of us really brought up the question of could we possibly prohibit, could we use language that would prohibit any other boat lifts? Even though it, it's not actually, I mean, it's not owned by the town, but it is a public easement of the town. So I wanted to know.
The problem that you would get into is that particular boardwalk area, there's no way right now that you could dock or more boat there because it's too exposed to the wind and boat traffic creating boat wakes and everything. If, if somebody came up with the idea of putting a boat lift in now, all of a sudden that's usable docking space. So which is something that I don't think anybody on this board would want. So we've got to figure out a way to regulate that before it becomes an issue.
Good point.
We want the star to be.
Yeah, move the star down.
We just, Melissa, can you just put the star there? It's got to accommodate everything.
Now, Fields, that's where you wanted that star too, didn't you? Yes, I, I really think we were all in agreement on that. So.
I was in favor of the boat lifts, but I still think that it should go down there.
Right.
Because there will be boat lifts, you know, past that area that we've talked about in the marinas, in the marinas.
In the boat basin is fine. Yeah. Like I said, that's not usable docking space right now, but if somebody says, hey, wait a minute, we're allowed to have boat lifts now, put a lift along there and get your boat up out of the, out of the water.
So maybe one thing that we could do, there was no time certain that we had to have the language back to the Board of Commissioners. And we could, I think, err on the side of caution and say, we still really would like to prohibit boat lifts all the way past where we own and up to, what did you call it, Hal? What was your term for it?
The entrance to the boat basin.
The entrance to the.
Marina basin.
To the Marina Basin. We could still ask for that, but we could send that language to our attorney to make sure that we are in the clear on not.
Yeah, that's why I was going to recommend that we get some legal advice as to how to handle that, you know, what the best way is to say, no, you can't do it, but not get ourselves in a situation where somebody said, well, I'm going to sue you.
Exactly, exactly. So I'm not sure, I think Melissa probably has heard what we're going to say, because that was what I really wanted to have a discussion about, because I, I think, I sensed that we all felt like we should do our due diligence and go as far as we could on this.
Yeah, everybody felt that way when we discussed it last month, that, you know, that area really needed to be prohibited also, not just the town property.
Yes.
Is there somebody who comments?
Oh, gosh. Okay.
So this is a comment from Doug Backman, who says, what about provisions to ensure compliance with American Disabilities Act? What if a disabled person requires a lift to enable them to use or enjoy their boat? Shouldn't the Town of Manio Marina be able to facilitate this?
Well, if they're in a marina, they're allowed to have a boat lift.
Right.
So it's not a question. And the type of ADA facility that you use to get somebody on a boat is different than an actual boat lift. It's a wheelchair lift is what it is, and it's a little Derek-type facility on the dock that just lifts the person in their wheelchair into the boat, as opposed to lifting the boat up out of the water.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I know that was a bit out of process, but it was, it was a good concern to bring forward.
Okay.
But yeah, there's no reason why that would be, not be allowed because it would be within a marina.
I mean, we can, that's, makes perfect sense to me, Hal. We could also, you know, ask our attorney if there's anything we need to be concerned about with that. So Melissa, do you, have you captured some language for us? Or would you like more discussion?
Well, I mean, so I would recommend either we bring this back at the next month meeting or we can work out an amendment to what I've proposed, and you all go ahead. And then, before it goes to the Commissioners, it will go to the town attorney anyway. And then I can just report back to you all. I mean, he has to review it before they take it up. So that's a requirement of the ordinance. But, you know, if we want to define, you know, we could do it two ways. Either from, like, the boardwalk that has a public easement to the basin of the marina.
What if we specifically, you know, made the statement that boat lifts are specifically prohibited from the town property, southern town property line to the entrance to the Marshes Light Marina Basin?
Which is a public easement.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, it is. We could, that's the reason we would be asking for that.
And so what I would suggest, so if you refer to the document where the changes are, where Section D is added, I would suggest that you add that as number 2, and then move 2 to 3 and 3 to 4. So that geography is at the top of that section.
So what is the pleasure of this group? Would you like to, would you like to send this to the town attorney ahead of writing this? I mean, would you like to, so that we could create some language and then bring that back? Or do you want to do it right here?
I don't see a problem with doing it here. And then if for some reason we stepped on somebody's toes by doing that, the town attorney will say, hey, you got to change it.
Okay.
Would it be advisable to maybe ask the town attorney to suggest some language to us that might, is that, that would be, what do you think?
Get it spelled out in legalese.
Yeah, legalese, truthfully, because.
Yeah, maybe they would do that anyway. So maybe, yeah. Melissa, I think that would be not a bad idea. So.
Sure.
The intention is, you know what the intention is, and I like that it, that it's broken out like you suggested. But if there is, you know, really a very sound legal way to say that, that would be helpful to this group, I think.
Okay.
So then we can, was this on for a motion tonight? Should we?
You can just table it until next month.
We can postpone. Okay. We can postpone to a date certain, and that date certain would be the next meeting.
Which is September, September the 8th?
September 8th? Okay. So would.
I'll move that we table this until we get the language straightened out to the September 8th meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. There is a motion by Hal to postpone, table the, the creation of the language for this until September 8th, when we will have a more defined statement for our zoning ordinance. And it was seconded by Nicole. Those in favor to postpone to date certain?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. All right. Excellent. So, let's see here. The next order of business is, I believe, I've lost my agenda here, is comments from board members. I will just go down the row here. Fields, can I start with you? Do you have any comments?
No.
You're good to go. Okay. No comments from Fields? Nicole?
No, I actually don't have any comments.
Nope, I'm fine.
You're good. And you're fine, too, Hal? Okay. Well, our favorite, no, an important time of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
That's by Hal. Is there a second? Field, seconds. All in favor?